Good evening, welcome to the Thursday, June 12th, 2025, Marlington Local School District Board of Education meeting. Roll call. Where's the pledge allegiance?
There's the pledge allegiance.
Yeah, the pledge of allegiance.
Let's do pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need to add that to the chickens?
I think we do. Oh, you. That hurt. Rule call, when you're ready, Mr. Foss.
Josh Hagan.
Here.
Karen Humphreys.
Here.
Kathy Crebko.
Here.
Mark Ryan.
Here.
Jonathan Swift.
Here.
Reading of the mission statement, Mr. Hagan.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge, and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Addition or corrections to the meeting?
We have one addition to the meeting agenda night. We will be adding the folk scholarship winners. The college students here, we can add those as.
Four A.
Four A.
Four A, so on the second page. Okay.
Under A.
Should we add the pledge to the call, too? And at the beginning, the pledge. Let's add the pledge in there. Okay, adoption of the meeting agenda as amended.
Some of.
Second. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Crebko.
Yes.
Mr. Hagan.
Yes.
Ms. Humphreys.
Yes.
Mr. Swift.
Yes.
Folk scholarship.
All right, good evening. This is, at this point in time, we, every year, our students in our high school, and obviously, and that you can be, is the Renewable Scholarship that Burning Folks, the Burning Folks Scholarship has. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about it, and then we'll call the students up and give them award. So, the philosophy behind the Burning Folks Scholarship was grounded in supporting students who demonstrate academic promise, strong character, commitment, and hard work to service. It reflects the belief that education opens doors, and not just to a personal achievement, but making thoughtful contributions to the world. So, overall, we had, I think this year, we had forty-three Burning Folks Scholarships, which is a remarkable number, both for the generosity of the folk family and the excellence of our students. Even more meaningful is, this is obviously renewable. This is why we have these students here today, because these students are all, obviously, attending college at this time. So it continues to support our Marlington alumni as they pursue their education beyond graduation. Today, we're recognizing these college students who are recipients of this year's Burning Folks Scholarship. Each one of these students has demonstrated not only academic success, but also strong leadership, character, deep commitment to their community, and qualities that reflect beyond. At this time, we're going to recognize these students, so if you could, please, hold your applause again. We will bring them up, each one by one. So out of these forty-three, just to give you an idea, you know how large this scholar, this scholarship is. There's been years where we've had three. When I've been here to, we had thirty-some last year, and this year was probably the highest number that I've seen apply, which was forty-three. Their endowment is just remarkable. So we were able to, I think for all forty-three of the students, they were able to give each one of those students fifteen hundred dollars. That's pretty amazing, when you think about the, the number of students that applied and were able to get this scholarship. So we really appreciate their generosity and what they've, what they've done. So I'm going to go ahead, I know, I think I got all the students here. If I miss you, you can yell at me, but I think I'm good. We're going to bring you up one by one, and I'll give you your check that you'll need. And we'll give you congratulations, but I really appreciate you being here. So I think we have Leah Guess. Connor, come up.
Connor Powers.
Connor Powers. Luke Diebel. Claire Cox. Rachel Frank. Corn Grinder. Blake Howard. Tander Scott. And Carly Scott. I usually have people here for pictures and that, so we're squeezing together, do this.
Let's go over here in front of the wall.
Dan, Dan, get down.
What about the, yeah. Just keep walking this way.
You're getting fallen into.
Yeah, go on side. That's nice.
Oh, yeah, maybe the go or the do, under the do.
Maybe the football field.
Yeah, yeah. Get out, out there. Don't get there exercise.
There we go, that's better.
Yeah, that's definitely.
Okay, so before we start the formal part of the meeting, if you choose to leave, you can do that now, unless you can stay for the formal meeting. It's up to you. Students, this is your opportunity.
It's okay, it's all right, we know, go ahead.
It's okay, it's great. It's pretty exciting.
Oh, boy. And she doesn't want to? Thank you, Maria.
Good call. Thank you, guys. All right.
Okay.
This is, this is a fun, fun night. Okay, the invocation, Mr. Foss.
Dear Lord, we thank you that we can be together here tonight, in this public space, and see these good things happening with children. We pray that you bless the board tonight, give them wisdom, of course, to do, to make good decisions. We just thank you for the opportunity to impact the children's lives in our community. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. OSBA presentation, Mrs. Crebko.
Here. Everything in the OSBA seems to be pointing towards the budget concerns, and they're looking for schools to participate and write letters, and they're just actively working on trying to get a budget that suits everybody. That's about it.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Mr. Swisher.
Yes, good evening. I do not have a presentation. I'm just going to be, speak from the microphone here tonight, because there's just a small, small things that I'm going to have to review by law, and just to talk about some additions that we're going to be adding to the agendas moving forward, you know, and that. So, obviously, our roofing project has started in the last two days. So they did about forty square feet today. Their hope is to, pending weather tomorrow, to get another forty square, another forty square done, and hopefully get the gymnasium roof complete. Now, I know the question came up from the board about, is there vents up there? You know, because you see the circles in the, in the gymnasium. So on the north side of it today that they did, there was no vents, and there isn't over there, but there are four over here on the south side, but they haven't ripped that off yet and started. So once they get into that tomorrow, we'll take a look at what that entails, if they were boarded up, what it was.
What are those circles in the gym?
We don't know. So we're going to, we're going to find out tomorrow, because they have not gone in there yet. So, once they open that up. But they just changed the forecast a little bit to a forty percent chance tomorrow, so it's going to be, I think they're going to watch that a little more closely, you know, where they're at. So that project's begun. Our lighting project is roughly seventy-five percent complete. They're working through that right now, and then Vasco is going to start paving, I would say probably mid-June. So when that project is, so I'll keep you updated on that. I'll have a complete overview with pictures, as always, and everything, what we did step by step in August, and then a breakdown of the different financials, if there was any change orders or anything that came up with that. Every year, I'm required to basically review with the board our DIPA and our Student Wellness and Success Fund. So the DIPA is your, your fund initiatives to support wraparound services for disadvantaged people aid. So, basically, we used to get a grant, a federal grant called DIPA, and a federal grant for student wellness and success, success funds. That grant would be a separate entity in our CCIP, which is where we track our grants. In the state's infinite wisdom, they thought it would be more fun just to throw it in general fund. So that's what they do, so that we don't really know, we just know it goes in there, and we get an allocation, and then we're required to report on it. So we use our DIPA funds and our student wellness funds for our school counselors, our SROs, our FSSs, and nurses. So you don't see it in a separate line item, because it's directly just related to, related rate. It's, all this money is deposited directly into general fund. So, just so you know, our allocation this year for disadvantaged people aid was one hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and fifty-nine cents. And our allocation for Student Wellness and Success Fund was two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. And then we're also required, and it's on there, if you go to our district website, and you go under Administration, you would see there on the right-hand side, it says our Student and Success and Wellness Plan, and I also put it in your folder, I just put it front back, but that's actually on our website. It's just required that there's a link. We submit that link to the Department of Education workforce every year. It just basically describes what, what roles our school counselors do, our SROs, our family support specialists, and/or our physical health needs, which is basically our nurses. That's kind of the rationale behind that. So, I'm just wanting to make sure that, so this year, for, obviously with our school counselors, our SROs, FSSs, and nurses, we use, that's where we use those two pots of funds for. Anything over, it's just, comes, it's just out of our general fund. But it's all in one bucket. But they still ask us to set it, try to set, set that aside, so it's a little more difficult on Bob's end, but I am required to report out every year to the board. So it's the same thing I did last year. Any questions about the DIPA or the Student Success Wellness Fund? It's really just two grants that they've just inherently put into that bucket. Okay. Moving forward, I think it would be a good idea to give you guys an enroll, I think you should have, on the, I'm going to start putting it on the agenda, or my update, basically a monthly enrollment, just so you guys have it. So, you should have in your, somewhere in that packet, it should be probably in the back, I think, is your, it should say your student enrollment for June. So if you have that, you can kind of pull that out. So we're, basically, what, the way that is going to look, and I can tweak this if you don't like the way it looks. This is what we've been doing for the, at least the last three years that I've been here. I get, I asked my, the administrators to basically submit. We work with our EMIS coordinator, and then they submit to me a monthly, basically a student enrollment by month. So we have Lexington, Marlboro, Washington across the top. It'll basically have by kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth, by building, how many is in the building. Next to it, you'll see KT1, T2, that's how many teachers in that grade level that teach that. So if you're looking at like a number, it gives you an idea of, you know, what that is when it comes to teachers by homeroom. Obviously, middle school and high school, they don't, we don't do that, by enrollment, no need. They have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, then high school, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth. Then you'll have a total enrollment. Now, these are kids that are basically butts in seats. These are the kids that are here, on a daily basis, okay? Underneath that, though, you'll get a total of open enrollment out, so by grade level, if kids that are out, then you'll get court placed kids out, because obviously we have a handful of kids that are court placed out, that we still get, you know, we still pay for. Okay? Tuition out, following a staff parent out. The word "out" that has a small number there of three, they're just, they're just out. That's the good word for it. And special ed out. So you'll see two different numbers. So you have a butt in seats number, for example, of one thousand eight hundred and three for the end of June enrollment, but a grand total ADM for the rest of two thousand sixty-three. If they were all in. But really, when you're, when the Department of Education and workforce looks at Marlington, they're looking at the butts in seats. When we're submitting enrollment, that's what they're looking at. But I think it would be good if you guys, if you come up with questions, if you don't, but I'm just, I plan on adding it to the agenda and just sending enrollment every month.
I actually do have a question.
Yes.
Part of, potentially, the state budget is saying that if we have any buildings that are sixty percent or less, we have to get rid of them. We don't know if that is going to go through or not, but it's in there right now.
Correct.
Do we have, what's our percentages of each building right now, do you know?
No, and the reason why is, and I actually put the, the ominous side of the budget in the House Senate, and back of your folder, I would have put the educational updates. I kind of, it's a fifteen-page document, I did it front back. I just stapled and gave it to you for general updates that possibly that the House and Senate are going to bicker back and forth with, why it goes into conference committee now. Because that, you know, obviously, the House did not concur with the Senate, which we knew that. If that would go through, Marlington's buildings were built at an age where capacity wasn't directly like in a line item when they did it. So they basically say for buildings that are our age, they, you bring in the Ohio Facilities Commission, and then they make that call. So if the House fills, fill, the Ohio Facilities Commission comes in and says the high school could hold X, and you have X number of kids in your high school, obviously, if it's under sixty percent, technically, that law went into effect, it could say, just like, you know, that you would have, I guess, say, this building could be offered for sale. Now, there's an appeal process if that would go into effect and things like that.
Yeah, and to make it clear, I'm not looking to close any buildings.
No, 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 no.
I just want to know how close we are to that line, so if we have to make adjustments internally, then we can to avoid having that problem.
No, as, as I went to the educational forum on Tuesday night, you know, and all superintendents were there in attendance, you know, Rob Gressbi and our closest neighbor, Alliance, made a very excellent point. You know, this is, this was his viewpoint on that exact question you just asked from the moderator. You know, Alliance High School was built for a capacity of three thousand five hundred students. It currently has under a thousand. So technically, it's below the sixty percent threshold. You know, like, really, you're going to close a very beautiful building, just like ours, that it's been maintained, it's been there a long time. Where are those kids going to go? You know, so it, it's kind of that thought process, and they're not the only one. You know, Jeff Towers says the same thing. Timken houses their career tech center. Of course, their career tech center is going to be under sixty percent, based on the capacity of Timken. You know, they're not going to shut down an entire Dalton Career Tech Center, but they could, so they're kind of, that's, there's a lot of discussion, I think, that's going to happen in the next three to six weeks before this comes out. So I don't, if that gives you an idea, it would be the Ohio Facilities Commission answering the question.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is the Phil's Facilities Commission?
No, this is the, this part, portion of the House bill, they have, they have different things embedded in there.
So this is all preliminary, there's no.
No decision.
I'm just wondering what the enforcement mechanism would be.
We have no idea. We really don't. It's like I said, it's, I'm not a sky is falling person, so I, as I've always said, I just think we wait and see, as, you know, there's so much that's changed, I think, in the last, what, since March, we started talking about this.
Yeah.
Every month, there's been a different version between the House and the Senate. So for us to speculate where this is going to go, or how it's going to affect Marlington right now, I don't think it's fair, until it gets passed, and then we can have a direct answer. So I plan on giving you enrollment, just to give you an idea every month, put it on the agenda from that aspect of it.
It would be good to, you know, if there's more information as it comes, comes to you, or.
I did share in the back of your packet, Mark, a bunch of information. It's about fifteen pages worth that's just came out, so that'd give you an idea, and that's all in there.
Okay.
And typically, when anything does come, that is like a short summary of, you know, like the original House bill that got sent out, it was six hundred and forty pages, so they just kind of briefed it in the educational section of it. So it's, as those come, I'll send it to you guys, just in a group email. That's fine. Other enrollment figures, just to have an idea. So for twenty-five, twenty-six, obviously, our kindergarten enrollment, we still are taking kindergartners. So we're up to about one hundred and twenty-five kindergartners right now for next year, where we're at. Open enrollment wise, we accepted, we only accepted forty-two open enrollment this year. Just to give you a little breakdown on that, we had, for kindergarten, we, from open enrollment standpoint, we had seven students at Washington, five students at Lexington, and eight students at Marlboro. Grade one, we had two students at Washington only. Grade two, we had three students at Marlboro only. Grade three, we have one student at Lexington, and, or they actually moved out, sorry, three students at Marlboro only. Grade four, one student at Marlboro. Grade five, three students at Marl, grade six, two students. Grade seven was closed. Grade eight, we had two students. Grade nine, three, and grade ten, two. And the reason why there's only certain grade levels, because when I made the, as teachers retired, and I, we chose not to replace them, to kind of can, be more fiscally responsible for what we're doing, we're trying to keep our, you know, it's, you have to basically limit your numbers coming in, and as I told. your numbers coming in, and as I told you, the way the current design of the, the budget bill is, we do not get more money for bringing in more kids. So for us to say, hey, we're gonna bring in, let another thirty students come in, and we end up having to add a teacher, that's another hundred thousand dollars, that's not a hundred thousand dollars, that's gonna, we're gonna end up having to ask taxpayers for, it's gonna come out of our fund. So until that changes and they re-correct, we can't do that. Any questions about those type enrollment figures, or that's my plan moving forward, just so you guys have that? Okay. That's really all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Public participation, did anyone sign up?
Yes, Mrs. Kathleen Purdy, like to address the board regarding Safe School Zone. Ms. Purdy, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Good evening to those of you in attendance. My name is Kathleen Purdy, and my address is three six one Barakth Ave., here in Alliance. Both of our children, Roland Junior and Valerie Purdy, attended Marlington and graduated in ninety-four, ninety-five. My late husband Roland was an assistant track coach here for eleven years. I'm here to emphasize Safe Zone School Districts for All Students. Why? Because every student should have an opportunity to learn without the fear and distress that results from harsh immigration enforcement. A Safe Zone School Board Resolution contain reassurances for students, procedures for responding to law enforcement, and information and support for families and staff. Countless school districts across the country have already passed Safe Zone Resolutions. These districts include large urban districts, like Los Angeles, to small rural districts in Colorado and New Hampshire, and everywhere in between, such as Omaha, Nebraska, Louisville, Kentucky. Educators are witnessing the impact of this type of trauma on our students, their families and communities firsthand. Because of this critical and pragmatic approach, I'm asking for the Marlington School Board to develop a resolution and district policy to create a Safe Zone Resolution. For the record, I have supplied the Marlington School Board with a proposed sample resolution, and through the Board's normal governance procedure, it can approve and sign a Safe Zone Resolution, including a policy that would then take effect immediately. Because all students, all students should have the opportunity to learn without the fear and distress that results from harsh immigration enforcement, so join the movement to make school campuses Safe Zones for immigrant students and communities. Teaching all kids regardless of status has been the right to public education. Hyler versus Doe, which was nineteen eighty-two in Texas. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My, after the three minutes?
Yeah, you did good.
Almost, thank you.
That's what a retired teacher should be able to speak within the confines of the requirements. Thank you again, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
I'll just take my seat and continue listening to the policy.
Okay. Old business, there is none?
Okay, we have no old business. New business? We have three for new business this evening. Item number one is our bullying report for the second half of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so I recommend, I'm just, I don't even, this is not even enough to be moved, it's just I'm showing the reports. We have one reported incident in K-12 buildings as presented in Exhibit A.
I gotta ask, I do it every time. You're telling me there's only one instances of bullying recorded for in half of a year throughout our entire school district?
Key is reported. There's, I would completely agree with you that there's definitely issues of bullying that happen in all districts, including our own, that is more than just one. Now, our policy has specific documentation on how, what has to be submitted or requested by a parent. Once that's submitted, and then given to that, and they go that process, that's the process that we have to follow based on the old policy. It does not mean that Mr. Farrell, Mr. Rizaletti, Ms. Weber, Mr. Smondiel, or Ms. Moore doesn't have internal documents or notes of parent concerns, complaints, their child being picked on, issues at recess, issues that happened in the lunchroom, issues that happened in any part of the high school that they haven't dealt with. But is it, is it something that happens over and over again? Have they dealt with it? Have they followed the right channels, or did they handle it on the spot? There's a little bit, things. Good question, fair question. I report what's given.
Okay.
But I will happily bring that up tomorrow in my eighteen meeting at eight AM.
I'd like to see some more bullying.
That's fine. Okay. Item number two. Recommend the motion to approve the MPI and Robertson Heating Supply Resolutions as shown in Exhibits B and C.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, so.
We also have another one in here, is that a mistake?
No, there's two, MPI and Robertson.
No, there's three in here.
What? There's not three.
Oh, we have two.
There's two.
Got a duplicate?
Oh, what, RF?
RMPI, or, I think.
RFI PM Holdings?
That is MPI. It's S-N-P-I.
That's their official.
Oh, okay.
In here, yep.
Okay, I was just confused, sorry.
We talked about MPI back in March, we tabled, in between that time, obviously, I was not available in April, and since then, we had Robertson Heating Supply also submit a community reinvestment area. So CRA, just for, just for reminders, a community reinvestment area, it's a property, it could, tax exemption to businesses that invest in new construction, renovation, or to a designated area. It's also to support economic development. Now, the main thing is obviously, you know, if I always said, when it comes to housing developments and asking for property tax exemptions, I don't even typically even bring it to the board, because it's a, it's a hard no, because we know how difficult it is to fund our schools as it is. You know, when you're talking about economic development, I always feel it's the, you know, it's the Board's decision to take a good look, because we want to support economic development, at the same time, anytime we have good economic development, it's gonna support our schools. So the one for MPI, we talked about this, was a small addition that they wanted to add. So the construction cost itself was roughly just about a million dollars. And that was gonna bring in ten new employees and two part-time employees, and they said roughly they're guessing about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand in a payroll. So the main question, when you talk about a CRA, is, so we're, we obviously get, you know, the, it's just on the addition piece, they're asking for tax exemption on the addition only, not their business itself. So for MPI, the question was, what is that gonna cost the district from a yearly basis? Roughly around seven thousand dollars, okay, to give you an idea. When we're talking about Robertson Heating Supply, this is a little bit larger project. So he's looking at adding, Scott Robertson is here, ninety-five thousand square foot addition to your, to your property? Ninety-three thousand. It's quite a large addition. So he currently has two hundred and fifty-two full-time employees and twenty-six part-time employees. This addition would bring in another twenty full-time and five part-time, with an added estimated payroll around eight hundred thousand to a million within the next few years. The addition or new construction costs, as you can see on there, is seventeen million dollars. Is where, so when you're looking at, on line item thirteen, when you're talking about a tax portion of it, from the county perspective, they're looking at new construction costs, they're not looking at the equipment you put in there, or this or that, okay? So we did reach out to John Oats over, and over at the auditor's office, and just wanted to kind of get more of a specific number when it came to these. So John did get back to us on an email. He said he had the appraisal department look at this, and they thought the appraised value of the addition would be probably closer to about five million once it's done. He said, using that number, forgone revenue would be about forty thousand for general fund, two thousand for your permanent improvement fund.
What are those numbers again?
Forty thousand for the general fund, two thousand for the permanent improvement Now, obviously, that's an estimate.
Per year, obviously.
Per year. And now, obviously, that's based on, you know, the submitted designs, what it is, they're guessing with the appraisal based on, you know, it's warehouse space, it's for warehouse, right, correct?
All warehouse.
All warehouse. So I just, you know, that was trying to give us a number to be able to share with you from a board member's perspective.
So between these two, it's forty-nine thousand dollars-ish?
That's correct. Now, that's if MPI chooses to do anything. Now, we have Pete Wersler here, correct? And you are, give me your full title.
Director of Planning and Development, City of Alliance.
Director of Planning and Development, City of Alliance. Is MPI planning on doing?
We're still waiting, we're, I reached out, see if they're, like, for speed, I'm still waiting for the staff to back that down. So, I don't know if it's, but, I'm, 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 I'm.
We're not sure where MPI sits right now, and obviously Kirk Keller's here too, he's the one that submitted the CRA, works in with Scott Robertson as, as owner of Robertson and Co.
And both of these have already been approved by the City of Alliance?
No, the City of Alliance cannot be actioned until we do.
Okay, so, all right. I, I, I give this to you as a recommendation to move forward with, that's my recommendation.
Excuse me, Dan, what did you say the numbers were for MPI?
MPI would be about seven thousand per year.
Why does one put money into the PI fund but not the other?
Well, it's our, it's our levies.
Oh.
What we have levied. Basically, it's gonna look at, they're looking at what we have levied out there, and that's how they determine, based on the, on the appraisal of that.
Dan, based on the estimates of new employment, what are we looking at getting as far as income tax?
I do not know. I can find out. I have never asked the question based on the amount of employees on income tax, you know, I know that we get that money that comes in, you know, with our different area companies that obviously sit on the industry park right there on Main. I can give you those specific numbers and find out, and Lucy Enquire and get that. It's a good question.
Yeah, Kathy, I think to clarify too, even with MPI, we would still get some, some PI money, I think that estimate was given to us just as, based on our overall mileage at the time. And I believe that seven thousand was on the high side, like using the full cost of the construction, whereas it might be appraised less than that. So I think that's a worst-case scenario for MPI.
I've got the estimated payroll on these. I guess we get one percent, is that correct? Alliance gets one percent, and we get one percent?
I, I don't wanna, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, to be honest with you. But I will give you the exact number. I don't want to speculate and be wrong. Bob, do you know the answer? Do we get one percent of payroll tax?
I don't know.
So there would be some offset, is the bottom line to that, is that right?
Yes.
There'd be some offset. Any other questions or comments?
I, I just, I think anytime the businesses that sit on Main Street, and they want to invest in Alliance or in Marlington, in a combination of both to expand their businesses and add jobs, is only gonna help us in the long run. That's my, my opinion.
Good for the community, right? Okay, call the role, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Okay. Moving on, we have our third new action is recommend the motion to approve the following summer pay rate shown in Exhibit C.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We just have secretary, custodian, and a, and a computer tech support that we get in the summer. So last year, it would have been a much larger amount, because we had certified teacher tutors, bus drivers, head cooks, cooks, paraprofessional aides, extra workers, but, like I said, we have trimmed back all our programming, just to make sure that we meet some of our financial goals that we wanted to set, we set forth, like I said, last month, so it's just a much smaller amount this year.
Definitely.
So.
Okay. Call the role, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Treasurer's agenda.
I'd like to recommend that the Board approve the minutes from the May board meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Some discussion? Call the role, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Financial reports, I would like to recommend that the Board approve the financial reports for the period ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, as presented.
So moved. Second.
Go ahead, Mark.
Kathy.
Give us Mark, I already had Mark.
Like to share a couple of high points. We finish, finish the month of May with a total balance of twelve million four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. And the cash balance in the general fund itself, six million five hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. The permanent improvement fund, one million fifty thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-four cents. Also, at the end of May, we finished with, in the capital projects fund, three million five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. After taking out the purchase orders we have for these summer projects, especially the high school roof, the available balance is five hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-one cents in that capital projects fund.
This is what I talked about last month, this was our heavy poll, we did about three million plus dollars in capital improvements this summer.
Two phases of the roof.
Two phases of the roof, and a large portion of the, the entire high school parking lot, which needed to read on, and the lighting.
Yeah.
Completion, so.
Yes, and then also in your packet, there's a, a list of issued checks, if you have any questions about those, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Hey, Bob, I, I know that, I just can't remember the name. We have a bunch of fifteen hundred dollar checks.
Folk scholarship.
That's the, because it comes out of the general fund, and then we get reimbursed for the, or it goes into the general fund from the folk scholarship, and then we got the checks?
Oh. No, actually, we have, those are paid out of the scholarship fund.
We, we house the Bernie folk money.
Okay.
We do the, you know.
I see what you mean.
I just want to make sure this one.
Every year, yep, it's always that.
Yeah, this would be any checks we issued regardless.
There'll be forty-three issued checks in this check run.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any questions? Call the role, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
I'd like to recommend that the Board approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five final appropriations and revisions as presented.
So moved.
Second.
As far as these go, the main things to share, there was only one fund that ended the year where I need to ask you for additional budget, and that was the food service fund to cover basically the food. to cover basically the food costs more this year. And the estimate was too low. And also increasing the budget in the capital projects fund as well, too. Oh, wait. No, I'm sorry. That was last month. I have both months shown on this column here. Yeah, it's just the food service fund, $122,000 additional budget to be added to finish out this year. No changes in revenue.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Kreppco?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Then to start the new fiscal year, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the fiscal year 2026 permanent appropriations as provided.
Sumo.
Second.
Yeah, there's a little more going on here. The first item on it is the general fund, increase the appropriation versus what I initially had by $80,000. And that was just kind of an anomaly, looking at the forecast in detail, what was put together by the firm we use, et cetera. Looking at some of the accounts, there were two that the budget was either missing or way too small. One had to do with the college credit plus textbooks, the other was for curriculum. I don't have an explanation as to why, but I did notice that as I was putting together the detailed budgets for the year. So I'd like to ask for $80,000 to remedy that situation for our initial appropriations for the year. The next item would be in the '18 budgets, just increasing that by $29,000 more. Those are based on, basically, we survey the, the principals. We give them a sheet with all their accounts on it, and they look at how much they expect to receive in revenue and that, and how much their cash balance is, and they basically establish their own budget for the following year. So that's just basically building up the initial estimate I had to match what their sheets showed for the year that they turned in. And the '22, that's the service funds that he's building, that's a similar story, adding 35, basically $3,500 there. Also, the 200 and 300 funds, the, you know, clubs and groups, increasing those as well, too, to reflect what they turned in in their budget sheets at each, for each entity.
So most of those are just donations coming in?
Fundraisers, donations, events.
So they, they budget, but they can't necessarily spend their budget. So they have a revenue sheet and a budget sheet they submit. So at the end of the day, they may assume under that they're going to budget X dollars, say $10,000, and they're, and they're anticipating this many fundraisers for to reach that thing. So that's what, he has to budget that amount. That's what makes it so difficult. At the same time, they have to then submit, you know, their fundraisers, their revenue, then what they bring in, and then they know exactly. So they may not even come close to spending, say, $10,000 on an activity count. They may only spend three, but they have every right to decide, like, hey, I'm going to work real hard to, you know, do that. So that's how we anticipate when he writes into these budgetary amounts, what we plan to budget for. Because if he don't, and he budgets too low, then he's got to come back to the board. So say they do a huge fundraiser and they only budgeted 10 grand, and they did a fundraiser and got 40, and they said, oh, I can't wait to spend this $40,000. They can't legally because the budget is only approved for this much. So this is why they have to pay that, kind of that...
Yeah, and behind these numbers, too, is that idea that they don't spend all the money that they budget typically. I start my initial budgets usually based on what was spent last year. So for those kind of things, it's going to start low, but then once they get their sheets, it's going to be more accurate to what they are authorized to spend. Doesn't mean they will spend it, but they're authorized to spend.
So rolls, so rolls over to the following year?
Yes.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Yep, the budget also can be, can include their carryover cash balance.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Kreppco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? Oh, I got Mr. Ryan. Sorry.
Mark it. Okay.
Can we get one vote?
Six oh.
One. One one.
All right. A moment, please. Next item is the donations. I need to find my...
Fund a fund transfer. You want the fund a fund transfer?
No. I don't have one. You must have an old, no one.
Okay.
Yeah, the next item, number five, is donations. I'd like to recommend that the board approve them.
Oh, there are two five.
Do we read them off first or get a motion first?
Are we getting a fund a fund? Is that a mistake?
Do we need a motion? And a...
Do we, do we skip the fund a fund transfer?
That's a picnic, yeah.
Yours has the fund a fund transfer on it? Okay.
Is there not one?
That must have been printed at a different time. The fund a fund transfer isn't on my copy. I did not have one. I believe Nicole must have printed off that agenda before I made my changes. There was one I was going to do that I was waiting for information on. The senior class every year authorizes me to transfer their money to, class of 2029 in this case.
Yep.
They're buying a picnic table, and I don't have the final cost for that yet, so I wasn't able to...
Make a note of it in the minutes.
To make the fund a fund transfer. So that'll be on the next meeting's agenda.
Okay, so that will just be taken out.
Yeah, Bob, you need to make a note in the minutes that you have two number fives under, under the treasurer's report.
And that was a tie.
And that is for, fund a fund would be for next board meeting.
Yeah.
Please note that in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, fund a fund, next meeting. Okay. All right, so...
For the donations, you have a motion?
Yeah.
Sumo.
Second.
Okay. Yes, please read them.
To the FFA, from A&amp;A Lawn Works, $100, to the FFA from Chive's Grill, $50, to the class of 2025 for prom, from the American Legion Post, $166, $500.
Awesome. We thank everyone for their donations. We call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Kreppco?
Yes.
Okay, Section E, personnel. If the board so approves, I would like to consent as our personnel number one through 15. I would like to pull out item 16, which is a leave request, and do that on a separate vote.
Good. Is there a motion?
Sumo.
Second.
Okay, so what we have here is recommend the motion to approve the, let me get to personnel. All right. So we're going to recommend the motion to approve the following personnel. So we have classified retirements, where there would be two. We have one administrative staff hire, that would be our athletic director that I shared with you. His name is Scott Stare. He would have been here tonight, but he is out of town for, with his family. So he will come to the next board meeting. He is excited to meet you. So he apologizes that he could not be here tonight. Scott's from Canton South. Will be coming over to us. We have some certified staff hires. These are just replacing teachers that have left that we're able to bring back. We have some classified staff hires from, that just were cleaned up from, that's, that's already worked, so they're on the 2024-25 fiscal year. We have classified staff hires for next year. These would be our cooks, custodians, anybody that's kind of turned in retirements. We have a transfer, classified, class transfer. We have preferred sub hires, summer staff hires. We have substitute hires going into, we had some that's already worked out the rest of the year that we had to get them hired. And then obviously for next year, starting for the 25-26 school year, supplementals and extended days that we always have. So those of one through 15. Any questions?
Any.
The supplemental corrections, you removed two people, you didn't need them?
Yeah, they were on there and they shouldn't have been, so they were never paid. Yes.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Kreppco?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Item 16 is, is recommend the motion to approve the following leave request for Rebecca Ryan, August 25, 2025 to September 26, 2025.
Sumo.
Second. Discussion.
I have to abstain because it's my daughter-in-law.
Okay.
This maternity leave.
maternity, okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Kreppco?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Abstain.
Noted.
Before we go on, I do, we do have, in part of those hires, he is back, sitting back there, Mr., it's Brian Baker, correct? He is going to be, so as you guys know, Rayo is retiring at the end of next year. So I've talked about this. I want Rayo to give me at least a year's notice because Rayo's been with us for over 20, 25 years and pretty much knows every ins and outs and consistently saves us a lot of money. So Rayo and Al have spent the last six months reviewing applicants that kind of fit the, the mold of, I guess, somebody that has a jack of all trades type thing, has a lot of, you know, extensive skill set. So he'll be, he's going to be joining us, and he's going to be joining with Rayo for the next year.
Is Rayo Jr.?
Just, so I had to get acclimated. So I, my first question is, do you know what hours Rayo works? And he said he likes those hours because Rayo comes in at 3:00 AM.
Wow.
You know, that's the hours he likes because he can get a lot more work done when there's people not around.[1685.83]